The regular meeting of the Cyrus City Council for May the 1st, 2018 is called to order. Please stand and join me in the flag of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, roll call please.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Wireball.
Here.
Trucca.
Here.
Stapp.
Here.
Foat.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Okay, before you, you have the minutes for the April the 17th, 2018 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept these minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. Trucca. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak. Does anyone wish to address council this evening? No one? Moving on to communications and petitions.
We just have one. This was addressed to the mayor from Mr. Kevin Locke, upper representative of Sandusky on April 19th. Dear Mayor Jeff, I would like to request your consideration of a commendation for Mr. Kevin DeTrey, the Cyrus Airport Manager, for his outstanding service and dedication to the highest aviation service standard. Highway and airway are our economic infrastructure. His performance is the best in this region, if not the best of Ohio. As I am a pilot based at the Cyrus Airport, I witnessed Mr. DeTrey's contribution and value to our community. He opens the office from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. seven days a week. Very seldom if he has to leave the office, there will be staff for any need or emergency if it arises. He always goes beyond the call of duty to take good care of any details of the airport and every aviator. Under tight budget, he is able to provide one of the most friendly airport services in this region. We are very fortunate to have Mr. DeTrey's dedication and your leadership to Cyrus. Thank you very much for your great service for Cyrus and surrounding communities. If you have any questions, please feel free to call my cell, 419-294-7037. Best regards, Kevin Locke, Pilot, Cyrus Airport Commissioner, CEO of Mid-Ohio Chiropractic and Acupuncture, Owner of Peaceful Families LLC, and Owner of Locke LLC. And that is based up to the bar.
Yes, and every word about this is true. We are very, very blessed to have Mr. DeTrey out there, and we will make sure that he gets a copy of this letter. And also, it would probably be nice if we send a letter from us too. We will get signatures for that and say thank you for his service, because too often we just take it for granted. But he does provide a great service for us. I need a motion then to accept and file this letter.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Trucca to accept the letter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Standing committee reports. Mr. Myers, why don't you get us started, please?
All right, Cyrus City Council Joint Regular Committees from Thursday, April 19th, 2018. Members present: Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Trucca, Doug Foat, and Andrew Shaw. Item number one, Cyrus City Joint Regular Committees meeting was called to order by Myers at 6:00 p.m. Item number two, public participation. John Keim of the Cyrus City School District Board thanked council for its work in providing a school resource officer for the district and spoke of the need for a second one. Item number three was the Order of Committee Business. Health and Safety Committee on Thursday, April 19th, 2018. Members present: Mark McKeever, Bruce Trucca, Andrew Shaw, and Kevin Myers Chair. Item number one, Browners Festival Street Closures. As Assistant Director of the Browners Festival, Committee Chair Myers turned this portion of the meeting over to Acting Chair McKeever. In letter addressed to council dated April 10th, the festival asked that several streets in the city be closed for the festival August 16th through 18th. Shaw made a motion to request legislation, making the requested closures with a second by Trucca. Motion passed by voice vote with Myers abstaining. Item two, ODOT paving project. Myers resumed chairmanship of the meeting. The Ohio Department of Transportation is seeking consent legislation for portions of two paving projects, resurfacing of U.S. Route 30 in both directions from the old Lincoln Highway to 0.08 miles west of Stetson Road, as well as a small section of State Route 98 from the city's North Corporation Line to 0.22 miles southwest of Beech Grove Road, and resurfacing and pavement repairs on State Route 4 from the city's South Corporation Line to Sandusky Avenue. No city funds will be required for the resurfacing of the U.S. 30. On the State Route 4 project, ODOT will cover 100% of the engineering and environmental studies costs and 80% of construction costs, with the city responsible for 20% of the construction cost. McKeever made a motion to request consent legislation for ODOT's repaving of U.S. 30 with a second by Trucca. Motion passed by voice vote. Shaw made a motion to request consent legislation for ODOT's repair and repaving of State Route 4 with a second by McKeever. Motion passed by voice vote. Number three, Myers recessed the Health and Safety Committee at 6:09 p.m.
Any questions or comments regarding this, these minutes? We have basically, as far as the Browners Festival is concerned, the normal closings that we've been doing for several years. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. And there isn't really much difference in that. The, you'll notice tonight that the legislation for this is taking on a new look. Yes, I am stretching this out until Mr. Trucca gets back. It's going to take on a little bit of a different look, the legislation. The law director contacted me and said it was getting too burdensome, the way it was one-on-aerographic. We streamlined it. It's a, it's a format that we'll be able to use with any other group or project that is coming into town that needs to close streets. So, okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to the Service Committee. Mr. Trucca?
Service Committee met April 19th at 6:09 p.m. Members present were Dan Wireball, Doug Foat, Andrew Shaw, and myself. Number one, waterline expansion. The Service Committee received a letter dated April 17th from the administration asking, number one, if the committee wishes to expand waterlines outside the city limits. Number two, will rematch residential rates within city rates. Number three, change the ordinance to allow for new rates. Number four, agree to a three-tiered tap fee. And five, if the committee remains interested in transferring the county water and sewer district to the city. It was explained that for this evening's meeting, the administration is just looking for guidance on whether the committee wishes to expand waterlines outside the city and where, so that already appropriated engineering funds can be expended to draw up a plan. It was noted that extending a line to the vicinity of State Route 19 and 100 and County Road 35 could be accomplished simply with city crews and that dozens of homeowners in the area have requested city water. Concerns were expressed about expanding a line for a single locality before an overall strategy is agreed upon. Foat made a motion giving the administration the okay to have engineering plans drawn up to extend a waterline in the vicinity of State Route 19 and 100 and County Road 35 with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by voice vote. No legislation is required. The matter will be brought before a full council. Trucca recessed the Service Committee at 6:28 p.m.
Any questions or comments regarding the minutes? And one of the things that we do need, we need a full council vote on this waterline expansion, which would be, as it is stated here, giving the administration the okay to have engineering plans drawn up to extend a waterline in the vicinity of State Route 19 and 100 and County Road 35. So we need a motion to that.
So moved.
With a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Foat. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you very much. Moving on to the Finance Committee. Mr. Wireball, will you?
Oh, why not?
Why not?
Cyrus City Council Regular Joint Committee, Finance Committee met on Thursday, April 19th, 2018, from 6:28 to 6:35 p.m. Members present: Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and myself as acting chair. First off was the school resource officer in the Cyrus Elementary. The Cyrus City School District has approved a memorandum of understanding with the city and the Cyrus Police Department to add a second school resource officer to the district. The school's, the school district's board has approved the expenditure of $60,040 to fund the position, with the officer being stationed in the elementary school. The money would go into the general fund. The police department would not need to hire a new officer to fill this position. Myers made a motion to request legislation accepting $60,040 from the Cyrus City School District for installation of a second school resource officer in the district, under terms spelled out in the memorandum of understanding with a second by Shaw. Motion passed by voice vote. Second was the waterline expansion. Shaw made a motion giving the city administration the okay to have engineering plans drawn up to extend a waterline in the vicinity of State Routes 19 and 100 and County Road 35 with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. No legislation is required. The matter will be brought before the full council. Wireball recessed the Finance Committee at 6:35 p.m.
Any questions regarding the finance minutes? Okay. You'd like this? Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't have any questions about the finance, but is there a way that maybe I could bring up this letter that was given to all of us, I believe, about waterline expansion?
You want to do it tonight, or do you want to bring it into committee meeting on?
That's what I would.
Thursday? Is that, is that in committee for discussion?
Okay.
Okay.
The letter that we received on that, Mr. Rule Waterman?
Oh, he's talking about the email.
Okay, recently?
Yeah, I was just saying yesterday.
Yeah, and I think that that's something that the, that the thing we're discussing on Thursday evening. Because I'll have more information by then.
Okay, what, where I was, okay, where I was going with it, I was hoping that maybe, instead of being just one council person, I was hoping that you would be the committee being such an important issue. I would like to see the Service Committee be a part of that.
Of course. Of course, yeah. And then, Madam Chair, yeah, we, you know, we run everything by you guys, you know, and this would be no exception.
Okay, who, who this man? Mr. Wireball?
Okay, public participation. John Keim of the Cyrus City School District Board thanked the Finance Committee for requesting legislation to accept $60,040 from the school district for installation of a second school resource officer in the district. Then Wireball asked for a motion to adjourn the Joint Regular Committees. Motion by McKeever and second by Myers to adjourn at 6:36 p.m. Motion passed.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, traffic commission. Anyone don't have any minutes this evening? Does anyone have any traffic questions about, they went to the mayor this evening? Can we talk about Southern Avenue that's getting paved?
As we speak.
They're moving right along. And you know, I think probably the base, the thing that I've seen is that the road is closed. Please, the road is closed. Don't try to drive down Southern Avenue.
Let them pave it.
Let them pave it. Yes, it's been amazing, the cars that are just flying, and since they milled it, it's flat.
Maybe we should put some speed bumps there.
Yeah, I think so. And so, just stay off of Southern Avenue until we get it done. Okay. I need a motion to accept committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
So moved.
Second? Motion by Mr. Foat, second by Mr. Myers. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Report to city officers. Mayor Reese?
Oh, thank you, Madam President. First of all, I think I want to signal out some special volunteers in the committee. A show of hands here. Who, who among the council members took part in Little League softball or baseball when they were younger?
They wouldn't let me play.
But you can play football when it's run by volunteer. So my point is, you know, these, these programs that are run, it took a long time to put together, they're all run by volunteers, and they're, and they're very unselfish. And I got to, well, with my granddaughter, so now I'm going to throw out the first pitch at Saturday, it's very cold, very cold and windy. But there was, all the diamonds were busy, and a lot of screaming kids, a lot of screaming parents, and life is good when baseball season's on again. Then we went over to Kids Kingdom for a while, you know, can't leave without playing on Kids Kingdom. And that, it's, that's a beautiful facility too over there, so, a lot of fun, we had a lot of fun. My granddaughter loved it, a lot of kids were playing over there too, and looking for a big, a big year for part. All the people are making those parks possible, you know, we need to thank them, you know, the people, like the city workers that keep it going, and the volunteers, Lions Club, Hill Lions Guild, that's an excellent park too. Speaking of preparing for the future, we celebrate our second annual Arbor Day on Friday. Planted four trees this year. Three London plane trees, and we planted a honey locust at the elementary school, just like we did last year. Planted these trees for many reasons. Beauty, shade, energy efficiency, stormwater savings. Most of all, we plant them so our future citizens can enjoy them. Planting trees and caring for them shows them they care about how we live now and how we will live well into the future. One thing we did notice, looking, we have what's called Bane Tree Ordinance. It was last updated in 1964, and needs a little updating. Some of the trees on there have new cultivars that, you know, that would, you know, allow them to be eliminated. There was a lot of spikes coming out of them anyway, that might poke somebody in the head. They're all, state of Ohio also recently added some trees to the ban list, and we'd like to, the tree board will be here Thursday night to talk about updating that list. So what I would like to do is refer that to public lands and buildings. And one more thing, Congressman Jordan stopped into town today, had a nice chat with Congressman about, mainly talked about an article that was in the Wall Street Journal today about, you know, attracting, how you attract people to your community. You know, everybody has the same problems, a shortage of workers, you know, we have a lot of jobs opening, and so there's innovative things that are done. I know this community has already been doing some innovative thing. I know the bank has a coming home scholarship that they started last year. But the article in the Journal was about, you know, just doing some things like helping people, throwing those things, and we had a nice discussion on that, and we stopped by Rotary for a short while too, so always grateful for this concern for our community. I think that's, thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Any questions and or comments for the mayor this evening?
Well, I got a couple.
Whatever happened, well, I guess this is for everybody, whatever happened to the tree ordinance? Did we, we didn't complete that, did we? We read through that? It's in committee?
It's still in committee.
It's still in committee?
There was a lot of things going on.
Well, shouldn't that be part of the ban tree and?
Yeah, we could, we could.
I mean, I would think that would be, should be incorporated in there somehow, I don't know.
Could certainly do that. There's just so many things going on in this first quarter, we decided to, with the water expansion, with EMS, and.
No, I just thought maybe I missed the meeting or something, and we completed that.
I don't think you missed any meetings.
And Mr. Jordan always comes to town, and I never know him.
I suppose I found out yesterday.
Yeah, okay, I'd just like to make that point.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what we found out. One other time, I see him come in, and he passed my office, and he walked past again. Apparently, he was lost, so, but he found you guys, yeah.
Yeah, he was in town, he's, well, he's back in the district. I mean, today, I think he was in Galleon, Marion, and the Cyrus alone, spaced about four hours, so.
So as we, as we find it, find out, we can send a notification out, we'll do that from now on? So does, like, sometimes it's short notice when I find out that he's coming, so, oh, okay. So I need to refer the ban tree ordinance into public lands and buildings. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foat, second by Ms. Sack, with the banned trees ordinance back into public lands and buildings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you. The Service Safety Directors report?
Yes, I have that right here. Council passed Resolution Number 206-2017 to apply for a bike path grant. The city's portion is $22,000. This needs to be referred to the Finance Committee. Bond anticipation note, and the administration would like to discuss the capital approvals that are needed at the park, the public lands and buildings, and Finance Committees. This was referred to council December of 2017. Pioneer students were here on April 20th, there were about 40 of them. They worked in all Miller Park and City Hall, helping with the cleanup, it's always much appreciated. Katie Bisk heads that up, and we had a nice turnout again this year. I'd like to thank the following restaurants for donating pizza to help feed these students, Suburban Lanes, Pizza Nell's, Little Caesar's, and Pizza Hut. Community unity speaks volumes. Service line warranties. Yeah, I, I certainly, I belong to this program, and pay a lot, I think it's a great program. There's another letter coming out to the residents of Cyrus about signing up for the water and sewer lateral insurance program. This information is also available on the city website. Man, I know, but city residents are responsible for the line all the way out to the, to the sewer, so. And all foot streets are going to be dug up this year, a lot of vibration, and there's a, you know, there's a chance that we will have some fractures there, so make sure you, you know, take advantage of that good program, it's very reasonable. Ohio Polytech recently completed the purchase of the Elswan Rubber Building, and want to thank them for their community involvement. Brad and Matt, they were in town, they belong with Dee from Tennessee, Kentucky. Had a really nice dinner with them a couple of weeks ago, and they say they love Cyrus, they love coming here, they love the people, they, they invest in people, they're investing in this community, and they gave us mulch again. We didn't have to ask, say, "How much mulch do you need?" And they're, and saving us a substantial amount of money. So the mulch we have at Kids Kingdom, some of the other parks, it's fantastic mulch that they make themselves, so, and if you see them, thank them. Fishing Derby is this week, Saturday, from 11:30 to, excuse me, 8:30 to 11:00 at Crossroads, usual spot. I heard at Rotary today that for the grand prize at, Mr. Myers, Mr. Shaw, correct me if I'm wrong, there's four Cedar Point tickets?
That's great, man.
Okay, all right, to, to the winners. Okay, so come on out. The EPA Administrative Order is still an ongoing process. Laura McGinnis of our case was here a couple of weeks ago. We have to report to the EPA every six months, and next reporting is due in August. You all know about Southern Avenue, we're very happy to report that it's coming right along. Mill and Pave Project was awarded to the Cyrus Road Materials, effective this week, right when we went from winter to summer. The park facilities are staffed, and the restrooms will, will be open. Our cleanup day begins next Monday, goes through the end of the week. You will be allowed an additional six bags of garbage for a total of 12 bags. As a reminder, everything must be wrapped in plastic. And we're taking applications for a seasonal boom mower. And everybody's not sure what a boom mower is, it's the one that does the sides of hills, it has an arm, you know, most of you may know that, but please stop by our office, pick up an application. And I think that is the, the end of Mr. Ryan's reports.
Okay, any questions or comments here, any word?
Well, I don't, it doesn't, it doesn't go, well, it kind of goes along with this, but the service line warnings reminded me that I just wanted to make everybody out there aware that, that we have the gas and electric aggregation, and I just wanted to give everyone a little what happened to me. Constellation is a company, right? And I was with Constellation, and my bill, we're on the budget, and it come out to $104, went up to $104. I'm like, oh, wow, you know? So I got ahold of Jeff Wangner and said, "What's going on? Before we find out, come, come to find out." I was with Constellation, but it was another program that I had signed up for before. So all this time, for however long this has been, I thought I was in the aggregation program, and I wasn't. Well, I got it straightened out. Now, instead of $104, my budget is now $68 now.
Wow.
Now, this is quite a big difference, so, so I just wanted to let the people out there to know, check in, call that number on your bill, it should say Constellation down there, and because I told my receptionist, you know, and she's right on the phone trying to get hers, you know, because she was with another company, so, so hopefully that'll save some of the people money, so. I've been wanting to say that.
Glad you shared that.
At the pro watch.
If I can take over, that's a, a type of business that, oh, I don't know how I should say this, maybe the sales tactics are a little high pressure. I don't want to say it's scrupulous, but they may not know all the, but make sure you ask the right questions, and if you don't know the right questions to ask, please call us at City Hall, we will help you.
Yeah, yeah, Jeff helped me out.
Many of the rates that are coming out now are low rates, guaranteed for three months, or redefined print, and then it goes variable, and then you're in some trouble, so we have some very good rates.
Well, and, and the easy way to tell is, it's on the website, isn't it? It's on the city's website that tells us what the rates are, point, something, whatever, I don't know what it is, but, but it's on there, or I guess you could call the office, and they would let you know what the rate is, so. If you don't have that rate, you need, you need to get.
Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, then I need a motion to refer the bike path grant to, does anybody hear the public lands and buildings and finance? I think it does, because it's going to be okay in the bike path and the finance committee, so we need to put it to vote. And then also, the bond anticipation note is already in committee? Okay. So the first one, we need a motion then to put the bike path, public lands and building and finance. Do I have a motion, please? Second? Motion by Ms. Sack, second by Mr. Shaw. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. Thank you. I saw that with the fishing derby, it used to be years ago, United Commercial Travelers used to do that for a lot of the ones in here, and my brother absolutely loved it. And it was, it's, it's such a great thing to, to get everybody out there and participating in that, and something that they may not do otherwise.
See, you brought up United Commercial Travelers, and that brought back the Little League stories to me, that's almost probably part of it. It's all of us kids when we were in Little League.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Mayor Wilson is in charge of it again.
Is he?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on, Law Director, Mr. Rattler.
Please, Madam President, tying on with the mayor and Mr. Wireball, we're saying, "Tis the season for the door-to-door sales for us." And if somebody comes to your door and tells you that they absolutely have to see your electric or gas bill, you do not have to ever show anybody your electric or gas bill, and so, I'll take them to that. And if you do feel like you've suffered in an appropriate high-pressure sales situation or been otherwise treated badly by one of those door-to-door sale people, please call City Hall or call the police dispatch. We do monitor those door-to-door salesmen, and we do, from time to time, review their permanent situations. This Friday, first movie day in the park.
Yay!
This one's sponsored by Cyrus City Council, so, you know, there'll be very, very short speech before the film. I wonder if you're going to volunteer, but somebody, I can give a little, very short introduction to the movie, and then we'll, sometime, probably at 3:39, when it can start, we'll, we'll kick off the movie. And it should be a fun event, we'll have some things going on there, so come out and check it out. One referral, we do need to refer, Foat reminded me this evening, do need to refer our enterprise zone and CRA legislation. It is. It is... And I would like for the community to consider not worrying about it until our next meeting on the 17th to allow time for Representative, the actual company that actually set it up. We met with them last week, and they've given us some insights to some updates, some things that need to be done with this organization since then and similar ones. So if we do talk about it on 17th, and if everybody's all right with that, then I'll get ahead and give her a schedule and help her give us her input.
Which one is that going to?
That is, I think, yeah, in second.
Yeah. Okay, then I need a motion then to place the enterprise zone and CRA legislation into Economic Development Committee. Mr. Foe, my name is second. Mr. McKeever. Motion by Mr. Foe, second by Mr. McKeever to place enterprise zone and CRA legislation into Economic Development that will not be brought up until next meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. But it passed. Thank you. The auditor who was silent last time is not this time.
No, I'm not silent. Sorry. You do have a statement of acquisition for April 30 here. Also, the income tax revenues. I know everyone's been waiting for this. April compared to April of last year was up 4%, and here to date, we're up 2% over last year. So that's good news. I also have the revenue tallies to budget. You can look those over. If you have any questions, you can get with me anytime. And then I have the ever-popular referrals. I have, I need two appropriations. One in, from Unappropriated Funds in 286, the 2018 Victims of Crime Act, under the Victim Advocate category, item materials and supplies, and the amount of $1,489.92 for training and education. This is a grant that our new victim advocate, Sam Caldwell, applied for for training. He will be going to, I believe, in August. This is an 80/20 grant, so we need to appropriate the 20% in the general fund under Program 7 General Government, under the Law Director, materials and supplies in the sum of $372.48. Here again, this is for training and education for the victim advocate. I also need a couple of transfers within the general fund, Program 7 General Government. This is under the Law Director, a transfer of $9,000 from Personal Services to Contractual Services for a contract with the county prosecutor's office to handle city prosecutions for three months. And also, within the 2018 Ohio Victims Assistance Grant, this is separate from Fund 286. This is Fund 285. Under Victim Advocate, a transfer of $2,500 from Personal Services to Materials and Supplies, and this is for local training that he's going to be taking, and also some in office equipment.
Okay, thank you. Questions by any of us? Nope? Okay, so then we have a, let's do this in two things, or two actions. One, for the appropriation for the Victim Advocate training and education to both funds from the 286 Victim, 2018 Victim of Crime Act Fund and the general fund, for the other 20% of the grant.
So moved.
Second? Mr. McKeever?
Second.
Second, by Mr. Myers?
No.
Other way around? Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. McKeever. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. And then we need two transfers. One is within the Law Director's office. This stays right within their fund, $9,000 from Personal Services to Contractual Services, and then with the Ohio Victims Assistance Grant, a transfer of $2,500 from Personal Services to Materials and Supplies. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Foe, second by Mr. Shaw. For the transfers, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. All else is quiet in the auditor's audit?
Yes, we survived tax season.
Yeah.
I'm trying to start cleaning in my office. We are continuing the audit. The gap conversion is close to being complete, and audit's coming up Friday, because they have work papers and to go over that, and the caper is in the final stages, so that should be completed soon.
Okay, thank you. You received the Treasurers' report at last meeting for March of 2018. I need a motion to accept and file that report.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers to accept the Treasurers' report for March of 2018. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Police chief's not with this this evening. Fire chief is not with this this evening. I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Foe, second by Mr. Shaw to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we have visitors' input regarding reports of standing or special committees and of city officers. Anyone wish to address council this evening? No one? Moving on for consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We have four pieces of legislation. They are all resolutions. Resolution Number 222, 2018. I'll read through Section 3 on this. The following resolution enacted by the City of Ucires in Crawford County, Ohio, herein after referred to as the city in the manner of the stated described project and declaring an emergency, be resolved by the Council of the City of Ucires, State of Ohio. Two-thirds of all members elected thereto concurring Section 1, project description PID number 77480, whereas the state has identified the need for the described project. To perform resurfacing of US Route 30 in both directions from Olmecan Highway to 0.08 miles west of Stetser Road, all of the Ucires bike paths will be resurfaced. In addition, there will be a small section of State Route 98 resurfaced in this project from the North Corporation limit of Ucires to 0.22 miles southwest of Beach Grove Road. This project is currently scheduled for the 2019 construction season. Now therefore be it ordained by the City of Ucires in Crawford County, Ohio, Section 2 Consent Statement, being in the public interest, the city gets consent to the Director of Transportation to complete the above described project. And Section 3, the Cooperation Statement, the city shall cooperate with the Director of Transportation in the above described project as follows. One, the city gets consent for the above improvement. Two, no funds are required from the city except that the city agrees to assume and bear 100% of the total cost for added construction items requested by the city, and not necessary for the improvement as determined by the state and federal highway administration. That is referred back to health and safety. Resolution Number 223, 2018, I will read through Section 3 on this as well. The following resolution enacted by the City of Ucires in Crawford County, Ohio, herein after referred to as the city in the manner of the stated described project and declaring an emergency, be resolved by the Council of the City of Ucires, State of Ohio. Two-thirds of all members elected thereto concur in Section 1, project description, PID number 10101356, whereas the state has identified the need for the described project. City of Ucires Urban Painting. The purpose of this project is to perform pavement repairs and resurface a state route in the City of Ucires. CRA State Route 4, 6.72, the South Corporation Line to 8.45, which is South Sandusky Avenue. Construction is tentatively scheduled to begin in the summer of 2019. Now therefore be it ordained by the City of Ucires in Crawford County, Ohio, Section 2, Consent Statement, being in the public interest, the city gets consent to the Director of Transportation to complete the above described project. Section 3, Cooperation Statement, the city shall cooperate with the Director of Transportation for the portion of this project within the Ucires Corporation limit as follows. One, ODOT agrees to assume and bear 100% of the preliminary engineering costs and environmental studies costs. Two, ODOT agrees to assume and bear 80% of the roadway construction and construction engineering costs. Three, the city agrees to assume and bear 20% of the roadway construction and construction engineering costs. Four, ODOT and the city agree that the following roadway construction items are eligible for 80% ODOT, 20% city funding, pavement planning, asphalt overlay, treatment of shoulder, height adjustment to existing guardrail, pavement markings temporary and fast dry, adjustments to catch basins, manholes, valve box, etc., mailbox supports and approaches, and work zone signs. Five, ODOT agrees to assume and bear 100% of the bridge related costs. Six, the city further agrees to pay 100% of the cost of the following construction items, pavement repair, partial and full depth, curves, curb ramps, sidewalks, city-owned signs, guardrail replacement of deficient existing and required new locations, and those items requested by the city which are determined to be unnecessary by the state or federal highway administration for the intent of this project. And finally, seven, a preliminary cost estimate for the city's share of this project is $111,000 for construction costs and $4,500 for construction and engineering inspection. That is referred back to health and safety. Resolution Number 224, 2018, authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director of the City of Ucires, Ohio to ban all vehicular traffic, including bicycles and skateboards, except authorized emergency personnel, for the 2018 Ucires Broadways Festival according to the schedule set forth herein. Further authorizing and directing the Chief of Police to make necessary arrangements for the rerouting of traffic on federal, state, and local highways and roadways. That should be referred back to health and safety. And finally, Resolution Number 225, 2018, authorizing and directing the Mayor of the City of Ucires, Ohio to accept $60,040 from the Ucires School District for the appointment of a second School Resource Officer from the Ucires Police Department in the school district, and that should be referred back to law enforcement.
I need a motion to accept this as the first reading.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. McKeever to accept this as the first reading. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We'll refer Resolution 222-2018 to Health and Safety, Resolution 223-2018 to Health and Safety, Resolution 224-2018 to Health and Safety, and Resolution Number 225-2018 to Finance Committee. This is the time we have public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. Anyone to address council? None? We don't need a recess, do we? Okay. Committee reports on pending legislation. Health and Safety Committee?
Resolution 222-2018 for ODOT US 30 repaving. Health and safety is favorable. Resolution 223-2018, ODOT State Route 4 repaving. Health and safety is favorable. And Resolution 224, 2018, Brown Street street closures. Health and safety is favorable.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee is favorable to Resolution 225-2018 for the School Resource Officer.
Okay, I need a motion to accept these reports.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Mr. Foe, second by Mr. Wireball. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For further consideration of pending legislation. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution Number 222-2018, which is the ODOT US 30 repaving, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second. McKeever?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Foe?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Resolution Number 222, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 222-2018?
So moved. Wireball?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Foe?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Resolution 222-2018 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 223-2018, which is the ODOT State Route 4 repaving, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second. McKeever?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Resolution Number 223, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 223-2018?
So moved. Second. Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Resolution 223-2018 is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 224-2018, which is the Broadways Festival Street Closures, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved. Second. McKeever?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Absane.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Foe?
Absane.
Resolution Number 224, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 224-2018?
So moved. Second. Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Absane.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Resolution Number 224-2018 is duly adopted.
For the second and third reading of proposed Resolution 225-2018, which is the School Resource Officer, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules and waive the reading of the caption and text?
So moved. Second. McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Resolution Number 225, 2018.
Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed Resolution 225-2018?
So moved. Second. Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Trucco?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Resolution 225-2018 is duly adopted. We'll make a note in here, too, that the reason for the abstentions, that both of you are very involved with the Broadways Festival.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any unfinished business this evening? If not, we'll move on to new and miscellaneous business. Friday, May the 4th, the Humane Society of Crawford County's Putting on the Dog Charity Auction is from 6:00 to 10:00 at Pickwick Place. Its cost is $1,250. Friday, May the 4th, is the first sunset movie at Shines Art Park. It's at 8:00 p.m., 8:30. It is free. Darkish. Bring a chair. There are going to be vendors there selling.
There should be some vendors, and much fun. Look for a while.
Saturday, May the 5th, the Ucires Farmers Market of Cease of this Season. The first one is opening at 2460 East Mansfield Street from 8:30 a.m. to noon, and that's every Saturday then for the rest of the summer. Tuesday, May the 8th, is Ohio Primary. The polls open at 6:30 a.m. and close at 7:30 p.m. And for the residents of Ucires, we vote out at the fairgrounds. So if you're not a resident of the city, you need to call and find out where you're supposed to go vote. Tuesday, May the 15th, Board of Zoning Appeals has a meeting at 4:00 p.m. Friday, May the 25th, this seems impossible, but it's the last day of school for the Ucires City School District. And on Monday, May the 28th, it's Memorial Day. City offices are closed. Trash will not be picked up on that day, but will be picked up on Tuesday, the next day.
Next day.
7:00 a.m. Make sure you have it out by 7:00 a.m., because they get a good start on that, because they've got to do the two days. Any other new miscellaneous business? Oh, I forgot that one. Thursday, May the 10th.
Yes.
It was made, at 5:30 p.m. is our public hearing that we have. This is regarding the R3 change to allow multifamily in the R3 district. So that's Thursday, May the 10th at 5:30 p.m. Anything else new? Mayor?
You know, is the public hearing?
Yeah, public hearing is here in council chambers, yes. And anyone who would like to discuss, be a part of that discussion, this is, we made no discussion, or no decisions at the public hearing, and we talked about what impact it would have on the different areas of town that are already zoned R3. So the public is more than welcome to come and attend that. Anything else new business? No? We're all here this evening. Joint regular committee meetings. All referrals from this council meeting and any open project list items may be discussed during the committee meetings. The referrals are?
We have five new referrals. The banned tree ordinance update goes to public lands and buildings from the mayor. The bike path grant goes back into finance, public lands and buildings. That's from the Service Safety Director. We have two appropriations from the auditor to finance. We have two transfers from the auditor to finance. And this last item is for the meeting of May 17. auditor to finance, and this last item is for the meeting of May seventeen, from the Law Director to Economic Development, is the update of the enterprise zone and CRA ordinance.